Good evening, everyone. Ooh, that's on. If you could please take your seats, we'll get started here in a moment. All right, thank you. Well, again, good evening, everyone. This is a public meeting of the West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours prior to the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted at the entrance doors of the Education Service Center and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WIBD, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that requested notice of our meetings. And in advance of this, I have confirmed that the meeting was properly posted. So my name is Chris Zweigert, and I am the President of the School Board. But actually, this is not a school board meeting. This is a meeting of the electorate. And we will soon have the annual meeting in approximately a half hour from now. That's also a meeting of the electorate. And so I just wanted to explain that because that means everyone here who is eligible to vote in the school district is eligible to vote on the items that we bring forward. So in other words, I'm going to be putting you to work because I'm going to ask you to vote on a number of items. And so those eligible to vote in the district can vote tonight on these matters. And what that means is you need to be a U.S. citizen, 18 years of age or older, and have to have resided in the school district for 28 consecutive days prior to today's date. And so when we get to these points where we need to vote, what I'm going to ask is for individuals to stand if they are in support, and then stand later if they are against, and we'll take a visual count. If it's close, we have individuals on the floor that will count the individual votes and will move forward from there. So we have a brief agenda tonight, but the first item on our agenda is to approve the agenda. So this is an opportunity for you folks to vote. I'd ask for a motion from the floor to approve tonight's agenda, which consists of the presentation of the proposed budget. Then we'll have a budget hearing with opportunity for comments, and then adjourn. Do I have a motion to approve? Excellent. Could I have your name?
Alan.
Alan?
A-L-L-E-N.
And this is for the record, thank you. And your last name, sir?
Alan.
Alan is your last name, thank you.
M-A-R-K.
I'm sorry?
M-A-R-K.
M-A-R-K, Mark. Thank you, sir. Mark Allen, thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Mark Peterson.
Mark Peterson, thank you, sir. Motion and second. All right, we have a motion and second to approve the agenda. All in favor of approval of the agenda, please rise. All right, I'd say that is very much in favor. Thank you, you may be seated. All right. Thank you. And I should also mention, if for any reason you're not able to stand, please feel free to also raise your hand. That will work as well. All right. So our agenda is approved. So I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Andy Sarno, who is the Assistant Superintendent of Business and Operations, and he is going to present the budget. And as a little bit of a preview, we'll have a hearing after that. If anyone wishes to comment or ask a question, we have comment or question cards. If you could please fill it out, that way we can keep track of the questions, and then that'll make you eligible to verbally approach the podium and state your question as well. So keep that in mind. But in the meantime, I will turn it over to Mr. Andy Sarno. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I appreciate your time. I really do enjoy this evening where I can turn that podium where we typically have the board. This really is for you. I'm going to be sharing a fair amount of information. I'm going to try to be concise, brief, but to the point, and keep things nice and simple so they're understandable. I have a couple brief presentations. There is a publication that goes in the newspaper at least 10 days before this meeting, which did occur on Thursday, the 16th. And then as well, just talking about a little bit of information, and as Mr. Zweigert indicated as well, any comments after the presentation, I'd be happy to listen. We'd be happy to listen. Much of this, including the following meeting, is advisory in allowing the board here, which they're in the audience tonight, to hear the comments. We are here because of a state statute 65.90 that says that we will have this meeting on behalf of all the constituents that are eligible to share this information with you. But more importantly, it's just, it's good to make sure that you have the availability to hear, understand, and know what's going on with approximately $100 million educating the 6,000 students within our district. We've called the meeting to order. We have an approved agenda. I'm going to be sharing a little bit of information. After that, item number D is anybody that wishes to have a comment? And then we would be asking for a motion to adjourn after that. And then we have a second meeting at 7:00. Little bit of housekeeping information is that this information, it was current as of Thursday, the 9th. Again, based on that publication date and how long it takes for me to get the information to the newspaper, this is information. It's not final because we're going to be setting a final levy, mill rate, taxation, the final budget on October 25th. So that's still a little bit over a month, approximately a month away. But there's still assumptions. We have some estimates based on the best information possible. And please keep in mind that the budget's a living document. So where we believe that this accurately reflects the programs and services that we deliver to our students, that spend plan can change. And quite often, we go through a budget amendment process in the spring, April, May, to capture any changes in that budget. And again, fairly formal process that we go through for that. When you came in this evening, and thanks to our individuals that were greeting you, I've got a small packet in the original shell, and you can open that up. It's an 11 by 17. We have the two meeting agendas, a little bit about the district, why we're here. But I open it up, and there's some supplemental information. There's five different graphs that we have, and it kind of starts to tell a story. And I'm going to capture some of that in my presentation, actually, all of it, in my presentation tonight. But it just tells us a little bit about the district and what we're doing and what's happened historically over the last 10 or so years with a lot of the finances. Within the shell, and again, there's handouts that are in there, is that budget hearing and the annual meeting agenda. There's the four resolutions that we'll be talking about at 7:00, where you will be voting on those. We have procedures for the annual meeting and just talking about what takes place, a little bit of the formal action there. I do have the budget hearing, and that's actually incorrect. I did have it published on the 16th, not the 23rd. But the revenue limit calculation as well. And so this is a Department of Public Instruction document that I utilize, that all districts utilize, to calculate the formula based on receiving money from the state, property taxes, and then calculating that full revenue limit that's been in place since 1993. Why am I talking about our mission and vision at a budget meeting is because we utilize that sets of information, preparing all students for college readiness and career success, or keeping our vision, excellence for all. We keep that in mind throughout the budgeting process. So even working with the board and where they have priorities, working with department leaders in the schools and how they're prioritizing their dollars, making sure that we keep that in mind to accurately reflect a good, solid spend plan while keeping taxpayers in mind. I'm going to jump in just a little bit. One of the interesting pieces, I mentioned revenue limits that were put in place back in 1993. The main driving factor of that is how many students are we educating? So we receive a certain dollar amount. It's controlled by the state statute. It dates back to 1993, but it's driven by how many students we're educating. And so this is the last 10 years that we have, but we're anticipating dropping below 6,000 students, about 5,800 students. This information was actually finalized as of late last week. I've not even captured because I wanted to be consistent with the information dating back to when I had this published. So this will be updated by October 25th. It was the best information. But we've had slow declining enrollment over the last several years. We're becoming households that are empty nesters, and not as many children are filling those houses. So this accurately reflects that. Summer school is also included, so the summer that we just had, all of those students that we educated over the course of the summer are included in this. But it's a three-year average. State aid history, why I mention that. Again, we talk about our full revenue limit, but really, the state right off the bat says, we're going to be giving you a portion of the money based on how property-rich or property-poor you are per student. So more property-rich districts receive less state aid, more property-poor school districts receive more state aid. We're actually considered a fairly property-rich district. Not only do we have industry, we also have lakefront. But over the course of the last couple of years, we've started to see a decrease because we, number one, have declining enrollment that I just shared. And then as well, our state property, or our property values, almost nearing $6 billion throughout all municipalities, is actually increasing just slightly faster than the state average. So by those two factors, we do have declining state aid. So you can see the property valuation. Actually, it's been growing state average. We've been growing by about 1% more than the state average the last several years. But just reflecting all of the values across the district, across all different property types, whether it's industrial, residential, agriculture, commercial. Our property tax levy, so again, as the state has said, your property values per student are growing faster than the state, receiving less aid from the state. Through that formula, more money has been needed to fund our schools through the property tax levy or just property taxes. So this is a reflection of that. Our mill rate history, and we've seen prior years within recent history, exceeding $8, $9. But the last three years, as well as the proposed budget that's in front of you, maintains a flat tax rate of $9.79, excuse me, $7.97 per $1,000 of assessed value. This would be the fourth year, and barring some large change that we don't have the ability to project at this point in time, I think we have the ability to be able to hold that taxation rate flat. A little bit of information that I am required to share at this meeting, some supplemental information as well, fund balance. So this is considered equity or a financial position. So we have an annual audit as of June 30th. They take a snapshot in time, and they talk about, our audit actually speaks and documents our financial position. We have debt within our district, both non-referendum as well as referendum-approved debt. And I'll talk about that, as well as the statutory debt capacity that we have, which we're well below that capacity. I do need to disclose our OPEB, which is our other post-employment benefit. So we have two different, for this coming year, we have two different post-employment benefits that retirees are eligible for. And I need to disclose how much money is being put aside for that service. We have our community services fund, which is our Fund 80. I'm going to disclose the programs and services along with the costs that are associated with those. I call it things outside of a typical school day. So as you can imagine, it's a variety of different things, programs that we utilize. And as well, we have estimates and assumptions leading into that October meeting, so this is yet to be finalized. We know that there's going to be changes coming, but again, I think we have some very good estimates, some good numbers, being able to have that taxation rate flat for this coming year. So fund balance, I'm going to jump into that just a little bit. So it's considered, it's not necessarily the cash equivalent, cash in the bank, but it's, again, a financial position. It's an equity account with assets, liabilities, and equity that would be equivalent to the private sector. It's seen by debt agencies as a sign of financial health. In fact, we just refinanced this summer $10 million. We received a double A negative by Standard &amp; Poor's. It's considered in the top tier. In fact, even though that we have strong economics in our area, and we've had a balanced budget, and we've slowly been adding to fund balance the last couple of years, that's something that we need to be thoughtful with in order to maintain a strong financial position for the district. We do have a board policy that talks about our fund balance. It says that we'll maintain a 14% to 18% fund balance within our general fund and some of the other associated areas. We're currently exceeding that very slightly. We're at 18.5%. However, when we take out some of these, we have some restricted dollar amounts for future expenses, we're hovering right in that 14% to 18%. Our cash flow has improved over the last couple of years. Historically, we've had a short-term borrow because money coming in, our revenues, have not always equaled expenditures going out. And we've needed to short-term borrow for very small strategic periods of time. We've not needed to do that, again, because of fund balance. So again, not just cash in the bank, very strategic equity amount for important purposes. As I indicated, as of June 30th, 2021, our fund balance was at 18.5%. It includes a Jackson Trust, so that's within our general fund of $1.5 million. It also includes a $3.2 million self-funded health insurance. So we're required to hold money, since we're self-funded with health and dental insurance, hold money in case there's a bad year with more claims. So that's included in this dollar amount as well. We will be bringing updated fund balance classifications. Last January, when we wrapped up our last year's audit, our June 30th of 2020 audit, I brought forward classifications for the board to vote on. And we will be doing that again here this winter at the finalization of our June 30th of '21 audit, anticipated to be in December. As I indicated, our Standard &amp; Poor's rating this last summer was a double A negative. We had been previously, three years before, at a double A negative. One of the biggest things that they've indicated is just keep being financially strong, maintain that fund balance that I just spoke about. But some of the other things, it's not just about our school finances, it's about the economy in our area, the local economics, and other debt ratios and other influencing variables. So we were complimented within our district. We are a strong, otherwise, we wouldn't have been in that top tier. But I do have that linked if anybody wishes to look at additional information. At this point in time, as I indicated, we have about $2.6 million of non-referendum debt. The board has the authority to enter into that debt without the members of the community voting on it. However, the referendum debt is taxpayer-approved debt. Right now, it's a little over $23 million. We have defeesed quite a bit of money over the last several years. And what that's doing is being financially responsible, making sure that we're being responsible to the taxpayers, retiring that debt as early as possible, while still being mindful of the taxpayers. But when everything is said and done between debt and interest, principal and interest, we're at just under $19 million of debt. That does not include, right now, in the proposed budget, I have $3.7 million of defeesed debt. And by that, those of you with a home mortgage, you can essentially pay that off whenever you'd like. School finance debt isn't the same. We only have a certain, very seldom opportunities to actually pay off debt, but we have the ability to tax for it, hold it in an interest-bearing account, and then when that debt is due, we have the ability to pay that off. So again, keeping in mind that we're keeping a flat taxation rate. We've been addressing our debt as an organization. We heard that as a part of the last referendum, trying to be responsible. The total indebtedness of a district, and this is a state statute that talks about 10% of the values. So as I indicated, we're worth about $6 billion across all municipalities, which means that technically, with taxpayer authority, we could go into debt of approximately $600 million. I just shared that we're sitting at about $20 million, so we're using very, very small portion of that at this point in time. So we're only using about 4.3% of our authority, or even 0.43% of our actual property-value ratio. The $9.75 million of the debt that we've already levied that we'll use to pay off our existing debt has not been included in that. So if I include that, almost $10 million, the ratio drops even lower. One of the other things that I need to disclose, our other post-employment benefit trust, which is our segregated fund, preparing for the future with a liability of any existing retiree payments. But beginning fund balance as of July 1st of 2020, a little over a year ago, was $3.7 million. Last year, we contributed about $3.3 million, upon which we expensed, so paying out retiree health insurance and those other coverages, about $1.2 million, leaving a balance of approximately $5.8 million. So we know that we have an existing liability that's there. We're making sure that we're being financially responsible by pre-funding that as soon as we can. There is a requirement that we have an actuarial study every two years, so we're current in that, and trying to be responsible. Our Fund 80, which is our community services fund, so the different programs that we operate with that is Badger Middle School co-curriculars. So these are our sports. At the middle school level, we offer that to private school and homeschooled students, which we do have students participating. It's approximately $82,000 for this upcoming year. Our school resource officers is approximately $180,000 per the contract that we have with the city. Before and after-school offerings to students is about $2,000. And then as well, our facility use outside of our school hours, which is primarily pool-driven, is approximately $70,000 totaling $335,000. As of tonight, with the proposed budget that's in front of you, that was in the newspaper, that are within the handouts, we have a balanced general fund. That's something that the board asks of administration to bring that forward every year. Other funds do have fluctuations, surplus and deficits based on their anticipated activity, all with appropriate activity. We've identified anything that we can anticipate at this point in time, as of today, it's all included. Our third Friday in September count, this is an actual date, that was the third Friday. That's well underway, as I indicated, that it was due to the state as of last Friday. I've not included any updated numbers to stay consistent, but that will be reflected in the October board meeting where this is all approved. Department of Revenue, Department of Public Instruction information is available on October 15th. I'll utilize that information to calculate final numbers, again, that will be brought forward at the October meeting for the board to vote on. Everything that we've done, we have a chart of accounts. It tells who, what, where, and why. So it logs just about everything. It all reflects state and federal requirements. It accurately reflects what we needed to tell to help us guide, to guide us in how we're spending our money and utilizing that for the programs and services. As I indicated earlier, our mill rate is flat, anticipated to be flat for the last three years, as well as the current budget that we're in. And then this is another important thing, too, because this budget that I'm talking about right now actually began last November, so November of 2020. And I anticipate the 2022, 2023 budget will actually start about November 1st. So we're going to already start looking at next year's, next school year's budget within about six weeks. I have just a brief presentation. I'm going to, this is the actual publication that was in the newspaper. It's at that point, then, that we could have any community comments, if anybody wishes to make a comment. I'd be happy to log any questions and get back to individuals at that point in time if I don't have an answer. And then we'd be asking for a motion to adjourn. What I've tried to do in this document, and again, this is the publication that was in the newspaper back on December, excuse me, on September 16th, Thursday, the 16th, is the publication on the left. And then what I've tried to do is capture some comments or notes, certain talking points that are important to share with you this evening. But the top section is our general fund, and this is, many states, all school districts in Wisconsin are required to follow a certain chart of accounts. But what this is showing is a balanced budget, where we would not be taking away from or adding to fund balance for the current year. General fund is a balanced budget, and it will be brought forward on October 25th for Next year is our special projects fund, so this is where we have a countywide Head Start program, our special education, as well as all of our student gift funds. It includes activity that we anticipate at this point in time, all of the individualized education programs for our students, again, the Head Start program that's being offered, supplemental dollars that's available, stimulus money, that's all been captured. And the only positive or negative or surplus or deficit here that would ever be is if student activities raised more money than they spent, or they had money saved and they spent that. But we're showing a positive balance of the student activity account of approximately $900,000. That all belongs to high school, Badger, Silverbrook, and then our elementaries, and any money that they've raised that's been donated. Our debt services fund, these are all of our areas, both referendum as well as non-referendum. It reflects our principal and interest payments for the last several years. Again, this actually takes, two years ago, audited. Last year's unaudited, it's not yet final, as well as the proposed budget for this next year. But with our debt service, it accurately reflects the debt payments. As I also indicated a few minutes ago, it includes a defeasance, where we'd be levying an additional $3.7 million for a future debt payment, and that would be brought forward to the board in October for voting. Capital Project Trust, we have two different funds, designated funds, where the district has the ability to designate money. One of these will actually be brought forward for your approval at the next meeting at 7:00. But we've been slightly building some equity or fund balance within these areas until we have a strategic plan and knowing where we're going to be needing the money at some future point in time. But right now, the money that's accurately reflected is about $1.6, $1.7 million of facilities projects that took place this last summer. Our Nutrition Services Fund, which is providing meals, breakfast, lunches to students across the district. The USDA extended free meals, not just from last school year, but all the way through June of this year. So this budget both reflects the staffing, food costs, but it also includes the financial revenue from the federal government, where they have a balanced budget within our Nutritional Services Fund. Our other post-employment benefits trust, this is where I just shared that slide a moment ago. We've been building up a little bit of a fund balance purposefully, anticipation of expenditures that are yet to happen, just making sure that we're being responsible for that outstanding liability. Community Services Fund, I shared the programs and costs totaling approximately $335,000. Again, middle school sports, school resource officers, and then anything outside of a typical school day, like the pool. That's all captured in here. There is a levy for this dollar amount for these programs, but we've been slowly decreasing the fund balance that exists in this to help offset and be mindful to taxpayers. Our last one is our Cooperative Fund. We're the fiscal agent for, oh, boy, I forget if it's girls or boys hockey. I think this is, this is boys hockey, I believe. But we're the fiscal agent where we have to designate and hold these funds in a separate account, but it anticipates both the revenues as well as expenditures for that sport.
Ice Bears.
Say that again, please? Ice Bears Boys, thank you, Superintendent Wimmer. All being told, we have about $100 million budget, as I shared earlier. Slight increase over last year. Property tax rate, we're trying to keep flat, where the mill rate is, has been held at $7.97 for the fourth year in a row. Our levy has gone up slightly, again, because of less money from the state, because of our property value is growing, our enrollment is slightly declining, so we have more reliance on our property taxes. If anybody has any questions at any point, whether it's tonight or even next week, please feel free to reach out. I'd be more than happy to discuss this in a little bit more detail if you'd like to sit down or talk on the phone. I believe I'm okay at this point in time. Would you like to go up and ask?
All right, thank you, Mr. Sarno. Appreciate that. We've now come to the hearing portion. So individuals who are entitled to vote at this meeting are also entitled to ask questions or make comments. We'd ask that you had filled out a comment card so that, for purposes of the minutes, we can track each individual. Are there any, is there anyone who wishes to make up a comment or ask a question at this time? If you'd raise your hand, give everyone an opportunity to do that. I'm not seeing anyone. I'll just ask one more time. Is there anyone who wishes to make a comment or ask a question? All right, very good. So we'll be picking these up at the annual meeting, which we'll be calling to order here shortly. So with no comments or questions, it would be time to consider a motion to adjourn. Would I have a motion from the floor to adjourn the meeting? Oh, there's someone right there, all right. Thank you very much. Could you please state, please state your name?
Mark Allen.
Mark Allen, thank you. Do we have a second? Mark Peterson, thank you. Mark Peterson, thank you for the second. Motion and second to adjourn. What I'd ask is, if you're in favor of adjourning, please rise. All right, thank you very much. That motion overwhelmingly will carry. Thank you. All right, the meeting is adjourned, and unless, oh, thank you very much. Oh, thank you, thank you for that. All right. So that concludes the public hearing on the budget. And so what we'll do now is, I will call to order the annual meeting of the electors. This is the one-hundred-and-second annual meeting of the electors of West Bend Joint School District Number One. And what I'd ask is, if we could all please rise, and we'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Would you like me to get you on a slide? That'd be great if you've got, yeah, it's perfect. Oh, my gosh. All right. Thank you, Mr. Sarno. So this is our agenda for, for tonight. We are on to the ground rules portion, and the ground rules portion actually was in everybody's packet, and that governs, in the event that we have discussion today related to any of the proposed resolutions, how that will, how that will work. Now, what I'll ask for next is, I said I was going to be putting you to work, we need to elect a chairperson for this meeting. And just like in the prior meeting, individuals who are eligible to vote in the district, meaning a U.S. citizen, eighteen years of age or older, and having resided in the district for twenty consecutive days prior to today's date, you're eligible to vote at this meeting. And so I would ask if there is a nomination for an individual to serve as chairperson for this annual meeting? I see one over there, yes, please.
I nominate Chris Swigert.
Oh, thank you. That's a nomination for me, Chris Swigert. Could I have your, could I have your name, please, just for the record? Jennifer Donath, D-O-N-A-T-H. Did I have that correct? Wonderful. Thank you, I accept the nomination. Is there a nomination for anyone else? I ask once again, a nomination for anyone, anyone else, any other nominations? All right, hearing done. All individuals who are in favor of me serving as chair for this, for this meeting, would you please rise?
Second.
Oh, you need a second? All right, thank you. A point of order was called, and I just need a second for myself to serve as chairperson of the meeting, so I apologize for making you stand early. Is there a second? Yes?
Mark Allen.
Mark Allen, thank you very much. All right, we have a motion in the second, and I'll ask one last time, nominations for anyone else to serve as chairperson? All right, now I will call the motion. All those in favor of me, Chris Swigert, serving as chairperson of the meeting, please rise. All right, that motion carries. Thank you very much, I apologize for all the standing and the sitting. All right, and speaking of all of the standing and the sitting, the next item on our agenda is to approve the agenda, and the agenda will consist of a state of the district report, which will be given by Superintendent Wimmer, and then consideration of several resolutions that I'll walk the group through around tax levy, disposal of district property, board member compensation, and then future annual meeting dates, and then we would adjourn. So I would ask if there's a motion to approve this agenda? Yeah? Excellent. Last name Bunzel, B-U-N-Z-E-L, is that correct? And your first name, sir? Brian, thank you very much. Is there a second?
A second, Shelley Krieger.
Shelley Krieger, K-R-U-E-G-E-R, thank you very much for the second. Motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please rise. All right, thank you. That motion overwhelmingly carries as well. All right. I see you're getting your calisthenics in tonight, so appreciate that. All right, since we've approved the agenda, the next item is the State of the District Report by Superintendent Jen Wimmer, so I will invite her to the podium.
Look, did you just put a three-minute timer on me? Like, come on. Good evening, everyone, I'm Jen Wimmer, Superintendent. I just marked my one-year anniversary with the district this past July, so I guess I'm an old pro now. Just as a reminder, our district is made up of several communities, not just the city of West Bend, but also villages of Jackson and Newburgh. You can see also the townships of Addison, Barton, Jackson, Polk, Trenton, and West Bend. We serve approximately a hundred and five square miles. You can see the different schools outlined. We have a early childhood program at our Rolfs Education Center and various 4K community partners sprinkled throughout. Another interesting fact is we have one-point-two million square feet of facilities to maintain, as well as two hundred acres of property. So it's not easy. You can see our, our various mascots. When Mr. Sarno talked about that enrollment, it's nice to see kind of a picture of where does that enrollment lie. You can see that we have approximately three hundred and fifty or so around each one of our elementary schools. We serve K through four at those sites, and then Silverbrook Intermediate School, Badger Middle School, serving five, six, seven, eight, and then our two high schools. We're pretty unique with our two high schools under one roof, which you're here this evening with us. Also, Mr. Sarno talked a little bit about our enrollment projections, so this is kind of where that enrollment sits. We know from an analysis that we had done prior to COVID, prior to things going on, that we should be settling in enrollment. Right now, we're at that, you know, about six thousand. We should be settling sometime in the next five years, right around a five-thousand mark. However, COVID came, building, not just shortage of housing, but also the materials for building, those kinds of things, and we have a lot of buildable properties. So I work closely with our cities, our villages, to understand what does that future look like, and we'll update those numbers to look at that so that we can do the work of rightsizing the district. Our graduates, we're so proud of them, out of the five-hundred-and-sixty graduates last year, five-hundred-and-thirty students completed a survey, it's something that's done annually, and you can see that almost seventy-four percent of our students go on to some type of post-high school education, whether it's technical college, a two-year institution, both of which are here right in town and so convenient for our students. Many start taking classes while they're with us at high school or a four-year college. About nine-and-a-half percent enter the world of work, whether through direct employment, a training program, some type of internship. Two-point-three percent enter military service, and several still remain undecided at the time of the survey. So we're really proud of our graduates, we're proud of the experiences and opportunities that we're able to provide here, and in partnership with area districts, such as our construction program, agricultural cross-sharing with Kiwaskam, as well as Marine Park. To highlight our fantastic staff, we report staff as full-time equivalents, so you can see our certified staff, those are our teachers, our counselors, our administrators. Instructional support staff include instructional aides, special education aides, serving in the classroom setting, other staff, our nutrition staff, custodians, office staff, all of these people who help make our schools run. It's seven-hundred-and-eighty FTE, but we have a little over eight-hundred-and-fifty actual people who work. They might work a mix of part-time, full-time, et cetera. We're really proud of our staff, they're an experienced staff, on average, spending sixteen-point-five years in education, so they're experienced instructional staff, and you can see our retention rate of our certified staff is almost ninety-five percent. So it's just amazing that we appear to be a destination district for talented staff members, and then they choose to stay with us. That's a trend we'd like to keep seeing. Speaking of our educators, annually, we deploy with partnership of UW-Muwanke, a Wisconsin educator development, support, and retention survey, and we are above the state average in trust among our staff members, collaboration with our teachers, and that they feel respected by administration who works with them. The percent of employees recommending our district as a place to work rose again for the second consecutive year. You can see eighty-one percent job satisfaction rates, also planning to stay with us as a district for the next several years, and then many celebrating that they had access to an instructional leader who has helped them with their own professional growth. So certainly, metrics that we monitor are proud of, and will continue to celebrate their increase. You might recall, about last January or so, we bring all of our facilities projects and large ticket items like that and technology to the board for formal approval. We completed almost one-point-seven million dollars in projects. A lot of that work, you can imagine, occurs in the summer when those schools are closed to students. We've had a lot of heating and cooling units replaced across the district, specifically Decor and Green Tree, new lockers at several schools, many were rusted out. McLean and Green Tree are waiting on their lockers. You can imagine the supply chain issues that you've experienced just at the scale within your homes for our district, so those were a little bit delayed, but we're looking forward to getting those in and installed. Some new bathrooms, several upgrades, including making them accessible and just general upgrades that needed to occur. Jackson Library, I love the upper, upper corner there, the colorful carpet tiles. We're still waiting on the red carpet tile, but it's, it's on order and will get integrated, and you can see they're making do with some transitional carts while their furniture is on delay for arrival as well. But it's a really amazing space. Jackson also, their entire parking lot was repaved as well. On the lower pictures, you can see the Nifty Nibble. If you're not familiar, it's a student-run cafe, and that received an extensive facelift over the summer, and excited to serve. If you've come to any of our football games, oftentimes you can see them selling concessions, so it's a great menu and amazing work experience for our students entering culinary arts. And then, as you can imagine, as I said, with the vast amount of facilities we have, just general roofing, repairs, replacement, and maintenance that's needed for the buildings that we oversee. Technology completed approximately one million dollars in work, things like firewalls, full phone replacements, new Chromebooks, that's a cycle of replacement. Recall that preceding COVID, that accelerated our one-to-one devices for all of our students in kindergarten through grade twelve, staff laptops, network segmentation, which is a security feature, also security training, and new Intranet for our own staff, and expanded access to student software when they're off-campus. So if you're doing virtual learning, distance learning, you know, students are accessing from home in new ways, so making sure that they have the tools that they need from wherever they are to access learning. And of course, COVID has been overshadowing the last several years in education. Last year, you can see our totals here, we, we framed some metrics. If you're not familiar, I would encourage you to visit our daily dashboard that we keep right on our website. We also send out a weekly report and monitor numbers of students and staff. Student investigations are when we're notified of a positive case, and we need to formally investigate all those close contacts so we can provide notice to families, students, and staff. I gave you last year's numbers, just so you could see context and letting you know where we're off to this year. Student cases are the number of actual positive cases. So while the number of student cases is high, a hundred and sixty, there's still less than ten instances in the district of actual transmission. So proud of the work that our families are doing, our staff is doing, and if you don't feel well, stay home, it's probably the best thing we can do to keep that on the doorstep out of the schools. And then you can see the staff numbers. We work quite a bit regionally with our public health, with directors at Children's Health, and one thing that they have said statistically and noticing is that our general fall illness, RSV, which is a respiratory illness, other illness, generally occurs about mid-October. They are seeing that arrive early, and they're also hopeful that that will move through just as quickly, and we'll start to see those numbers decline with our students and our illness. This fall, we're seeing quite a bit more general illness, and again, abundance of caution with our mitigation measures, just asking everyone to stay home, not be present in schools, making sure that we have learning accessible. So that's a large part of our work that we're still in attention to while we're in person. We also continue to provide a full virtual learning experience for students and families who wanted to take advantage of that as well. Something new with our COVID mitigation this year were phases for mitigation, not just looking at COVID, but also illness, because we know keeping our students healthy, our staff healthy, keeping that outside of our schools is important, and I just wanted to give an update. Again, you can find this all on our daily dashboard, but some cumulative numbers thus far, all classes start in Phase One with general mitigation. Phase Two, we've had two classes, three programs. Generally, our programs are either a club or an athletic team of some kind. We foreshadow any movement in phase wherever we can to alert people to be on heightened monitoring, and sometimes cases just come in or illness comes in at a rate where we can't foreshadow that. We've had no programs, our classes go into that Phase Three. We've had four classes and one program into a Phase Four. Recall that we use intermittent face coverings in our mitigation, and that kicks in into our Phase Four and beyond. We just last week at the tail end shifted two classes to distance learning, again, trying to move swiftly when we see numbers on the rise so we can disrupt a pattern and keep staff and students healthy. We've also had a variety of 4K classrooms with illness where they just naturally close our students in 4K, don't wear face coverings at all, and we saw a little bit, again, as, as Children's Health predicted, just a little bit earlier arrival of other illness. So again, that's something that takes quite a lot of management and just being on those numbers every day with a whole team in an effort to be very proactive and responsive to what we see in front of us. Looking ahead, hopefully we can move past just COVID management and can see us moving through the fall illness, and those numbers stabilizing are actually just that healthy population again. But our focus at the board level and the administration level is really on reviewing our policy. You've seen us do some policy work over the last year, but leaning on having updated policy language, a very clear process, not just at the board level, but in our operational level, in our schools, and then procedures that we use so that we're consistent and following those processes, whether it's review of a curriculum, whether it's vetting a purchase, all of those things are bound by policy process and procedures, so making sure we're in attention to making sure that those are most up to date. We'll be convening community conversations. It's something that we would have started with last year upon my arrival, but again, COVID made the nature of those conversations not able to happen, so hopefully we'll stay healthy in the community so we can convene community conversations with the intent of soliciting community input, whether you're a parent, a student, a business owner, or resident in the community regarding elements of our continuous improvement plan. So you can see the current plan focuses on student learning, engagement and customer satisfaction, safe and secure environments, and effective and efficient operations, so we'll be revisiting those goals and then soliciting input from our community to reframe the next iteration of continuous improvement with short and long-term goals. We'll also be updating the facilities plan. We are having a comprehensive study of all of our athletics fields and spaces in addition to our facilities, so that will be updated. Again, we talked about making sure we're rightsizing our district for the enrollment we have right now and projected future enrollment, so we'll be updating those. And then, of course, looking at those goals and creating a dashboard of metrics for not just accountability, but also celebration of our goals and our achievements in the district. So that is the work ahead for our district while taking a look back.
All right, thank you, Superintendent Wimmer. All right. Let's see here. Here we go. All right. So next on our agenda, we're going to consider four, four proposals, four proposed resolutions. And so how this will work is, I've put the first one up on the screen, they're also in your packets, so please feel free to take a look at those. And what I'll do is, I will, for the good of the order and for the record, I'll read the resolution. the resolution, and then I'll pause and ask if there's a motion and a second in favor of the resolution. If there is, then we'll pause and we'll give the opportunity for discussion. You'll have the opportunity to approach the podium and comments or questions with regard to the resolution. And then, once that is complete, we'll vote on it. All right? So what we'll do is let's start with the first resolution. And again, all these resolutions were proposed by the school board, and the school board is asking for your approval of these resolutions. And I'll also point out, as there are in the administrator notes for this first resolution, that the amounts in this resolution are non-binding, and that has to do with the fact that on Monday, October twenty-five, it'll come forward for formal approval, and by then, we'll have the final information from DPI and the Department of Revenue, except for one piece, and that's the Capital Projects Fund allocation. That will be binding tonight. So with that in mind, the first resolution is as follows. Resolved by the electors of West Bend Joint School District Number One, West Bend, Wisconsin, that there be and hereby is levied on the taxable properties within the confines of the district taxes in the amount of forty-seven million, eight-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-nine-hundred-sixty-four dollars, including eight million, seventeen thousand, two-hundred-ninety dollars to be applied on long-term debt obligations of the district, one million, six-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars to be applied to the Capital Projects Fund, two-hundred-seventy-thousand dollars to be applied to the Community Services Fund, and the balance of thirty-seven million, eight-hundred-sixty-four-thousand-six-hundred-seventy-four dollars to be applied to the General Fund for the 2021-2022 school year in accordance with the recommendation of the school board. I'll ask at this time, is there a motion in support of the resolution? Mark Allen, thank you very much for the motion in support of the resolution. Is there a second? Yeah? I'm sorry? Could you say that again? Deb Anderson, thank you for the second. We have a motion and a second in support of adoption of this resolution. I'll now ask for discussion. Is there anyone who wishes to approach the podium for discussion on this item? Okay, just one more time, anyone who wishes to participate in discussion on this item? All right, hearing none, I will close the discussion and we will take a vote on this resolution. All those in favor of adopting resolution number one, please rise. Right, thank you. Motion will overwhelmingly carry. Thank you. That resolution is approved. All right. We'll proceed to resolution number two, and this resolution is unchanged from the prior year, just giving you a little hint. And this has to do with the disposal of district property. Be it resolved that the school board of West Bend Joint School District Number One is hereby authorized during the school year to sell or dispose of any property belonging to and not needed by the school district, provided, however, the sale of any individual piece of property whose estimated value is more than five thousand dollars shall require specific independent authorization by the school board, and provided further, that the maximum aggregate value of all property sold without specific independent authorization by the school board shall not exceed twenty thousand dollars during the current fiscal year. And again, this language is identical to the prior year. So I'd ask if there's a motion in support of adopting resolution number two. Yes, please.
I move to adopt resolution number two, name is Robert Dieters.
Robert Dieters, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mark Allen, thank you for the second. Motion and second in support of resolution number two. I'll now pause. Is there anyone who wishes to engage in discussion on this resolution? If so, please rise. Anyone else? Anyone? All right. Seeing as there's no one who participates in discussion, I will now call the motion. All those in support of adopting resolution number two, please rise. All right, thank you. That motion also overwhelmingly carries. Appreciate it. We'll move to resolution number three. And resolution number three deals with board member compensation, and this too is unchanged since the prior year. The amount has been in place since 2014 to 2015. So the resolution is as follows. Resolved by the electors of West Bend Joint School District Number One, West Bend, Wisconsin, that the salaries of the elected members of the school board of West Bend Joint School District Number One, West Bend, Wisconsin, shall be fixed at the sum of two thousand five hundred dollars per year per member and two thousand six hundred dollars per year per officer. Be it further resolved by the electors of West Bend Joint School District Number One, that board members be paid their actual and necessary expenses in traveling outside the school district in the performance of duties, including mileage at the rate established from time to time and by board policy, which rate shall not be greater than the maximum amount allowed by the Internal Revenue Service as a business deduction, and that, when duties require school board members to be absent from regular employment, they may be reimbursed for actual loss of earnings in an amount per day as established from time to time by board policy. I'd ask if there is a motion in support of adopting resolution number three. Susan Sauer, S-A-U-E-R for the last name, correct? Thank you very much. That's a motion in support. Do we have a second? Yes, please.
Brian Bunzel.
Brian Bunzel, thank you for the second. Motion and second in support of adoption of resolution number three. I'll ask at this time, is there anyone who wishes to participate in discussion on this item? If so, please rise. Yes, please approach the podium. Go ahead. And what we'll do is we'll give you three minutes to speak, and you may proceed. Thank you. If you could please state your name and your address also. Thank you.
My name is Mark Allen. My address is eleven South...
Street, West Bend. Question I have is can the motion be, or the resolution be amended?
The resolution can be amended. We have a motion and a second in support, so I need to call that motion first to see if it passes. If that motion would not pass, then we could amend it. But please state your questions or concerns.
I would actually ask that we disapprove the resolution as drawn and increase the sums that are being offered for the school board members and officers. These are pitiful amounts for the amount of work that they do, and I would actually propose doubling them. That's it.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. Is there anyone else who wishes to participate in discussion? All right, thank you again for the comments. What I'll do is I'll ask to see if there is a motion in support of amending the first motion. Please go ahead.
Mark Allen, motion to amend the board member compensation from twenty-five hundred and twenty-six hundred dollars per year to twenty-two-five thousand per year per member and fifty-two hundred per year.
So Mr. Allen is suggesting with a motion to amend the first motion to change the sum to five thousand dollars per year per member and fifty-two hundred dollars per year per officer. Do I have that correct? Okay, thank you. Is there a second in support of amending that motion? Yes, please.
Jennifer Donath.
Jennifer Donath? Thank you. All right. Motion and a second to amend. So what I will do is I will first ask if, to have individuals please rise, if you are in support of amending the resolution, then I will ask for a vote on the resolution itself. That's clear.
Any discussion first?
Thank you. Any discussion on this particular amendment? I also would invite you forward to the podium if anyone wishes to discuss this particular All right, not hearing anyone, so we will close discussion. Oh, sorry. Is there someone? Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. This is what happens when we have these bright lights. Thank you very much. If you could please state your name and your address.
My name is Shelley Krieger. My address is seven-one-five Highlandview Drive, West Bend, Wisconsin. My discussion point would be that I agree that school board members should receive more than the twenty-five hundred and twenty-six hundred. I just don't know if that's a part of our budget that is available. And so that would be my question, is that budgeted? Is that money going to be taken from another fund for curriculum or teacher pay? So that would be my question before we would vote on something like that.
All right, thank you very much. I'll ask Mr. Sarno if he has information to answer that question. Thank you.
The proposed budget that was in front of you earlier this evening included the current proposal, as is on the screen. By all means, we could make an amendment to that when I bring forward a final budget on October twenty, excuse me, October twenty-fifth. I could increase pending approval at this evening for resolution number three. By all means, I mean, it's not, in fact, I just pulled out my phone to see if I couldn't do the math real quick. I'm sure Lenny already has the dollar amount up on his, our HR director. But we could make a change to the budget to reflect what was carried forward at this evening. But seven people at approximately twenty-five hundred dollars, I mean, we're talking less than ten thousand dollars total. I hope that answers your question a little bit. It would not be stealing from another program. We could make some adjustments and shifts that would not adversely impact another program.
All right, thank you for the question. Any additional discussion? Yes, please. Absolutely. Please come forward to the podium. Thank you. If you could state your name and your address, please.
Jennifer Donath, two-two-two South Eleventh Avenue. I didn't sign a card ahead of time, so if I need to, please let me know. This is just a logistical question. Could we take the approach that we would be voting that we would approve up to double the amount? Can we have that wording in there? Because that was a very good point about where the money would come from. So I guess as we wait to see how everything shakes out for October twenty-fifth, is that a possibility? I'm not sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one moment, I'd just like to confer. We're just talking to check and remember, and remember the rules. This is the body that needs to approve the salaries, and so I appreciate the idea of approving an amount up to, but it's this group that needs to actually approve the dollar amount. And so the up to would be kind of indeterminate, but certainly appreciate the idea, but that would be the suggestion. With that, is there any other comment or question that anyone would have? I'd invite you forward. All right, well, thank you for the discussion and the participation on it. So in front of us, we have a motion, again, to amend this resolution, to change the sums to five thousand dollars per year per member and fifty-two hundred dollars per year per officer. So I'm going to call that motion first since we've concluded discussion, and then we'll vote on it. So this is the vote to amend it, to amend it to those amounts. So that being said, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of amending it to five thousand and fifty-two hundred dollars per year, please rise. All right, please be seated. All those not in favor of amending the motion, please rise. All right, the eyes carry it. That motion is approved. Now, what that means is we've amended it. So the resolution now for consideration is resolved by the electors of Joint School District Number One. The salaries of elected members of the school board shall be fixed at the sum of five thousand dollars per year per member and fifty-two hundred dollars per year per officer, with the remainder of the motion staying the same. So I'll ask now to vote on approving that resolution. We did? All right. I just, just one moment.
We had a motion, a second discussion, and you just did it.
Oh, that was just, I thought it was just for the amendment, to amend it. All right. Yep, so just to double-check, that first one was to amend the motion. So we now have the motion amended. Now we will vote on the resolution itself. So again, to approve resolution number three, all in favor, please rise. Thank you. Any those not in favor of the resolution, please rise. All right, thank you. That motion carries. All right, appreciate the involvement from our audience. Thank you very much. Sorry for some of the gymnastics there, but we wanted to be sure that everything was on the up and up. The next resolution for consideration is our future annual meeting date. I wanted to give a little background here. Normally, what we've done in the past is this body would approve the exact date for this same meeting one year from now. The school board thought that, especially given what's happened in the last year and a half, it's tough to be able to predict a date one year from now and guarantee that it's going to work for the community. Coupled with that, we're not always exactly sure when we're going to have the exact information from the Department of Revenue and DPI. So the statute allows this group to permit the board to pick the date, and the idea would be the board then would pick a date closer in time that allows us to have a better, a better, more well-timed meeting. And in the event, for some unforeseen reason, the meeting needs to be changed, well, then the board can do that. Otherwise, we'd have to reconvene the electors to set a new meeting. And so again, given what's happened in the last year and a half, we thought for simplicity's sake, we would like to propose this resolution as a school board to the electors. Resolved by the electors of West Bend Joint School District Number One, West Bend, Wisconsin, that future annual meeting dates, beginning with the 2022-2023 annual meeting, will be determined by the school board, as is outlined in the proposed Language of Board Policy one-seventy-five in perpetuity, unless the Language of Board Policy one-seventy-five were to change at a future point in time. And so I would pause there and see if there is a motion in support of adopting this resolution. Way back there? Oh, yes, I'm sorry, way back. Yes, please.
Would you approve Linda Fink, L-Y-N-D-A, Fink, F-I-N-K? Thank you for the motion. Is there a second?
Mark Allen, second. Thank you very much. Motion and second in support of adopting resolution number four. I will pause to see if there's anyone who wishes to participate in discussion. Any individuals for discussion? Oh, yes, thank you. Please come forward. Thank you. That's all right. Thank you. If you could please state your name and address and your point for discussion. Thank you.
Kate McCall, two-two-three Sycamore Street, West Bend. I would like to know what kind of lead time there would be on proposing a date. Is this going to be like decided a week ahead, two weeks ahead, a month ahead? How much lead time and prep time then would we have to know that it could get on our schedules?
That's a wonderful question. Thank you for asking. What I would anticipate is we bring forward prior to July first, a preliminary budget forward to the board for action in order to begin spending money, receiving revenues. So typically, that's brought forward as early as April, more typical in May. It's been as late as June, but generally in May. And at that point, I would ask the board, upon their authority and the jurisdiction that this allows, to determine that date at that point in time. So most likely between April and June.
The meeting around this time in the fall, September, October? Is that usually?
The state statute allows anywhere from April fifteenth to October thirtieth. The beauty of this meeting, and it's highly probable it would be the fourth Monday in September, a year from now, which I believe is the twenty-sixth next year, highly probable that it would still be that, so it would follow our past trend. However, as President Zweiger indicated, it allows a little bit of flexibility in the event that there was something that was needed that allowed us to utilize information at a different point in time. But yeah, okay, thank you for asking. Okay, thank you for asking.
Great, thank you for the question. Any other individuals who wish to participate in discussion? All right. Hearing none, we'll close discussion, and I'll ask all those in support of adopting resolution number four, if you'd please rise. Okay, very good, and that motion will overwhelmingly pass. Thank you very much. All right. Well, then the last part of our, of our agenda is adjournment, and before we do that, I just want to thank everyone here who take, who took the time to come to this meeting, to participate, for your thoughtful questions. I greatly appreciate it. Technically, I'm not supposed to speak on behalf of other board members, but I, but I can tell you, we, we all do appreciate it when individuals show up and wish to take part in, in school district business. So thank you very much for that, and also for the opportunity to service your chair. With that, I would ask if there is a motion to adjourn. We'll give that to Brian Bunzel. Thank you. Thank you. We'll give that one there. Thank you. And Mr. Mark Allen, the, the second. All right, motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor, please rise. All right. Thank you, everyone, that motion overwhelmingly carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you for attending.